Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020. The topic of this work session is, oh, recycled asphalt policy, public hearing follow-up. If you'd like to join in and listen, the phone number is 360-252-9020, and the PIN is 1234. However, if you call in, mute yourself. Is there any background noises that we can't control, or we have to shut it off? So please mute yourself when you join in. We'd like you to listen in. We're allotted one hour for this, so we have sufficient time to get through some follow-up that we are asking for. By way of introduction, I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board, also President as Vice Chair, Commissioner Ty Mensah, Commissioner Gary Edwards, and our County Manager, Romero Chavez, and Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell. Our attendance. We also have the pleasure of Josh Cummings, the Director of CPED, and Jennifer Davis, Manager, and Maya Tippel, Senior Planner. Excuse me. This says that we have a, this cover sheet says informational, but also says a decision. And so you're looking to ask whether, I'm going to paraphrase this, whether we move on with the amendment, do away with the amendment, or send it back to folks for more research and more discussion, and replenish it again for next year sometime. Is that correct? Oh, so Romero, do you want to start this off with any framing, or are we going right to Josh?
Yeah, that is on point, Commissioners. This fresh off the press, based on the many public testimony you received yesterday, as well as that written testimony, I think it has come to this meeting to staff a brief view, higher level, some of the comments you have received, and really is the, whether the Commission is interested in taking an action this year. That will be December 15, 2020, last meeting, official meeting for the Board. If that is the case, I will ask the Board to provide direction. If it's not today, the latest next Tuesday morning, which is December 8th. So that is the context of this.
Okay, great, thank you. Josh?
Yeah, thank you. You guys may have heard this before, but it is okay to repeat, I believe. A lot of how we got here was because of the great direction from the Board of County Commissioners. You providing staff in CPED prioritization of the items you wanted us to work on to facilitate the conversation for the community helped guide us to this point. I want to say thank you also to Maya and Jennifer and the team. All of this is the behind-the-scenes work, and the Planning Commission and the long nights have led us to this point. In fact, they've got another one tonight, starting at 6:30 PM with the Planning Commission. So it's been a bit of a day, but we appreciate all your attention to these issues as we facilitate this conversation. As you've heard in the public hearing, it has a lot of different input from different folks throughout the community. So thank you again for your direction, and thank you to the staff in the Planning Commission for their hard work on this topic, getting it to you. I'll hand it over to Maya.
And let me ask you to interrupt the flow of things. Romero, do we have folks that have joined in via conference call?
No, none that I, no.
Okay. I just want people to realize this is not public testimony time, we're just going through a follow-up. So go ahead. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you. Maya Tippel, Senior Planner with Community Planning. As mentioned, this is a follow-up briefing from our public hearing yesterday evening. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. As with our brief earlier this morning, I'm asking that the Commissioner hold their questions and discussion until the end of the presentation, so we have time to get through everything, and then we will have time for discussion today. So this briefing is on the recycled asphalt policy amendment, and this is follow-up from last night's hearing. So today I will go over same format as the briefing earlier this morning. I'll go over very high level of the public comment that was received on the proposed amendment. I will review the options for the next steps and timeframe of the proposed amendment, and then I will review the options specific to the amendment changes. So we are requesting a direction from the Board no later than December 8th in order to allow staff to have time to wrap up that final resolution language, and make sure everything's tidy and ready to go for an action on the 15th. And the direction we are looking for from the Board is what timeframe would you like to take action on this item? And if you'd like to take action on this item this year, we would like direction on which option you would like to report. So a bit of history about the proposed amendment, just as refresher. This is a comprehensive plan amendment that was submitted by Lakeside Industries in 2016. As you've heard, they did submit several applications prior to 2016, but those applications were never formally added to an official docket. They were always taken off the preliminary docket. So in 2016, they again submitted an application, I believe it was their fifth application that they submitted. And in 2017, early that year, the Board at that time added that item to the official comprehensive plan docket, and it has been on that as an official docket item, CP11, ever since. So I do want to note that this is currently a separate docket item from the Nisqually Subarea Plan update. Both of those are officially docketed items. And in 2017, the Board at that time made the decision to separate the two items, and they are being reviewed separately. Earlier this year, the Board provided direction to move this citizen-initiated amendment forward. It was identified as a higher priority, and so it's going a little bit more quickly than the Nisqually Subarea Plan. But the request from Lakeside Industries was to amend Policy E5 within the Nisqually Subarea Plan, and currently that policy prohibits asphalt recycling based on water quality concerns. The request is to change that language to allow for asphalt recycling within the Nisqually So just to hit on what this request doesn't do, this is a legislative proposal, and it would amend general policies and goals that currently prohibit asphalt recycling in the Nisqually Subarea. It is not a consideration of any sort of permit, and if the policy was amended by the Board this year, then any operation that wishes to recycle asphalt will need to apply for a permit after that policy is amended. So we're not considering any specific site applications or permit applications at this time, we're just considering the general changes to the policy language. So the area in which this would impact Policy E5 is in the Nisqually Subarea Plan, so it is specific to the Nisqually Subarea, which is located in northeastern Thurston County. Asphalt recycling is currently allowed in the rest of Thurston County on a site-by-site basis, provided it meets the county code regulations, like zoning requirements and critical area requirements. The Nisqually Subarea is the only area in Thurston County that has a policy-level prohibition on asphalt recycling. And the Nisqually Subarea is about 9,000 acres. It includes a lot of natural landmarks, like the Billy Frank Jr. National Wildlife Refuge. It includes portions of the Nisqually Indian Tribe Reservation, JBLM, and McAllister Geological Sensitive Area. There's also quite a bit of long-term agriculture in Nisqually agricultural lands in that area, and there are two active mines in the Nisqually Subarea. So to review the public comment, last night you had a lot of great testimony. We had a lot of folks come out, and that was really, really, really good to see that everyone came out and testified. We had 26 oral comments at last night's public hearing. Twenty of those were in support of the proposed amendment, and six were against the proposed amendment. For that public hearing, there were 56 written comments, and some of those comments did discuss permit-specific items. At least one of the comments was entirely permit-specific, so I'm not going to review the concerns that were permit-related, I'm only going to go over the major themes that are policy-related. So the written comments that we received, 24 of those were against the proposed amendment, and 18 of the 24 specifically referenced the League of Women Voters letter that came in on November 4th. The major themes of the comments that we received that were against the amendment stated, primarily a big theme was to reject the amendment now and to review it with the Nisqually Subarea Plan to allow for a holistic review. There were also concerns that were cited about critical aquifer recharge areas and fragile ecosystems in the Nisqually Subarea. There were concerns over pollution to groundwater, concerns over impacts to wildlife, and we did receive one comment from the City of Olympia that I want to note, because that comment encouraged further review using site-specific studies, particularly to look at best management practices and environmental conditions in the subarea. We did also get in a comment from City of Wasey that was in favor of the proposed amendment. So to go over the comments that were in support, we received 31 written comments for the Board public hearing in support of the amendment, and three of those comments cited support for Option 3, which is an option that requires that RAP stockpiles in the Nisqually Subarea be covered, but it still allows for asphalt recycling. Three of those comments were specific in support of Option 2. This would again allow asphalt recycling, but it does not specifically require the stockpiles to be covered. It just removes that broad prohibition. And the remaining 25 written comments didn't specify whether they were in support of Option 2 or 3. So both of Option 2 and 3 would allow for asphalt recycling, but Option 3 is the one that requires an additional best management practice for covered storage of stockpiles. So the major themes of the comments that were in support of the proposed amendment reduces cost to the industry and also to people who bid on projects that require asphalt. It's sustainable, it conserves natural resources, both oil resources and mineral resources. It's encouraged at the local, state, and federal level. It allows the industry to remain competitive, and it reduces waste and keeps asphalt out of landfills.
Hey, Maya.
So.
On the 31 comments that you have on top, I think it might be a typo, doesn't support, not against, right?
Oops, that is a typo. Thank you for catching that. On the right side of this slide, it says 31 comments against, that should be 31 comments in favor.
Just to clarify for the view in public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So options for the next steps and timeframe, same structure as our briefing earlier today. There are three options for the Board and how quickly they would like to move forward with this proposed amendment. Option A is to meet an adoption this year, and that would require the Board direct staff to move forward, and direct staff on which option to move forward. This is the only option that ensures an action is taken before the end of 2020. And in order to do this, a decision is requested no later than December 8th. Option B is to direct staff to do additional review. This could mean holding additional briefings, conducting further research, doing some stakeholder work, or developing new options. This pushes review into 2021, and there would likely be some further briefings with the Board to iron out what specifically would be needed before a final action can be taken, what additional research would be needed. And then Option C is to direct staff to delay action on this item and to fold it into the Nisqually Subarea Plan update. This would delay action into 2021, or possibly even later, depending on the priorities of the Board and the docket situation for next year. So to go over options for the proposal and the proposed amendment, if the Board wishes to move forward on this item this year, they would need to provide direction on which option for the amendment, and there are currently three options as were presented in the public hearing documents for last night. Option 1 is no change to Policy E5, which continues to prohibit recycling of asphalt in the Nisqually Subarea. Option 2 is the applicant's request, and that would revise Policy E5 to allow for asphalt recycling. And then Option 3 is the applicant's request, which would revise Policy E5 to allow for asphalt recycling, but also includes additional language in Policy E5 and in the Thurston County Code that would require covering of RAP stockpiles. So the specific type of cover, whether it's a hard storage, a hard shed, or tarp, is not identified in that language. It's kind of left to the permit process, but it would require that some sort of practice be implemented in order to cover the stockpiles. So Option 3 was the Planning Commission recommendation. That was a unanimous recommendation, nine to zero, and I'm going to go through quickly what the text for those options looked like. So this is current language of Policy E5, which states, "Allow accessory activities to be considered inside the mined-out portion of a gravel pit through site plan review process." Examples of allowable accessory uses would include concrete pipe and/or septic tank construction, and the recycling of used concrete. The reprocessing of imported mineral materials shall not be the primary accessory use, and the reprocessing of asphalt shall not be allowed due to water quality concerns. These activities shall be discontinued once reclamation of the pit is completed in accordance with Washington DNR standards." This is the current language, and Option 1 would be no change to that, so it would continue to prohibit asphalt recycling in the subarea. Option 2 is the applicant's request, and it makes a small change to Policy E5. So under the second sentence, it would add asphalt pavement as an example of a type of allowable accessory use, and it would strike the prohibition in the second to last sentence, and those would be the only two changes under Option 2. Option 3, which is the Planning Commission recommendation, has a little bit more language added in it. In addition to the applicant's request, which would allow for asphalt recycling, there's some additional language that states, "Operators shall employ best management practices for covered storage of recycled asphalt to ensure minimal environmental harm and impact due to leachate. Best management practices will be determined through the site-level permit review process, but may include tarping, storage sheds, or other methods." So it adds a requirement for covered storage at the policy level, and also there is a code change that mirrors that requirement. So it mirrors that best management practices are required, but the specific type of best management practice is left to the operator to determine through the permit review process. So going back to the next steps and timeframe, Option A is the only option that gets to a final action this year. That would require a direction from the Board on whether to move forward 1, 2, or 3, and what to include in the final resolution, and that direction is requested no later than December 8th. Option B directs staff to do more research and do more stakeholder work, hold more briefings. That would delay a final action into 2021, and the specific of what is needed can be a discussion that continues beyond December 8th, but we would need to know if the Board wishes to delay this by next week. And then Option C combines this with the Nisqually Subarea Plan update. That would delay review into 2021, or as I mentioned earlier, potentially later, depending on the priorities determined by the Board with the next docket cycle. So that concludes my presentation, and as we did earlier today, I'm happy to click around, and we can have a discussion, and I'll take any questions.
Excuse me, thank you, Maya. Any mini money mo. Ty, you got questions? You want to start?
Sure.
Okay.
I got a couple of question areas. One is, I don't know if this would be for Maya, Jennifer, or someone else, but I was wondering if there was any staff response to the tail end of the League of Women Voters letter where they talked about the SEPA process, and how it should have been done prior to submission to Planning Commission, and they cited some legal cases there. Just curious about that.
So for this legislative amendment, we follow the same exact SEPA process that we've had in place for quite some time in CPED, where we issue our determination under SEPA after we have a Planning Commission recommendation. That way we know we're evaluating the right proposal to be able to do that environmental evaluation of whether it's a significant or non-significant impact, and that's the process we use for all legislative amendments.
And I will add in response to that, there is a response noted in the County Response on the matrix, but we did receive one comment on the SEPA process and the SEPA determination, and that person who commented did get a formal response as to what our current county process is, some of their questions aligned with that. So we do accept and begin the SEPA process as soon as we receive a citizen-initiated application. So the SEPA process actually began for this project in 2017. However, the determination is not issued, as Jennifer said, until after we've received a Planning Commission recommendation.
So they say in this letter that Thurston County Code 1709050 specifically states that the SEPA analysis should accompany the staff recommendation to the Planning Commission. That's, and I didn't, I didn't, I just saw this, you know, in the last day or two, and I didn't have a chance to follow up on that, but.
The portion of the SEPA analysis that accompanies the materials that go to the Planning Commission is the environmental checklist, which is the analysis of potential impacts. And then the Planning Commission will have that before them, in addition to all the other information related to the proposal. And then the SEPA determination is done post-Planning Commission recommendation.
My other question is about, in some of the comments related to water quality, they mentioned the critical area, critical aquifer recharge area. And I was wondering if you could just kind of let me explain, I know what the definition of it is, but I don't know, like, who determines it? Is it an objective decision, a subjective decision? How many of these do we have in Thurston County? Do we have other recycled asphalt storage areas near a critical area aquifer recharge area, or would this be something, you know, unique and not tested? I don't know how sensitive that is.
Right. Yeah, so the county has, there are, I believe there's three tiers of critical aquifer recharge areas, and CARA 1 is the extreme sensitivity. So the water in that area can percolate through the ground the most quickly, and 2 and 3 are a little bit where the water moves a little bit less quickly through the ground. So Thurston County has critical aquifer recharge areas pretty much over, the majority of the county is identified as some sort of category of a CARA. The Nisqually Subarea has, oh gosh, I think it's between 80 and 90%. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head as a CARA 1. So much of the subarea is an extreme sensitivity, critical aquifer recharge area, and I will say that that specifically is something that's regulated through the Thurston County Code. So we do have restrictions in the Thurston County Code, critical areas ordinance, on what types of uses can occur in those areas. So it's a site-specific thing that's determined when someone comes in through the permit process, whether or not they can cite in a CARA 1, CARA 2, CARA 3, and there are restrictions that are handled on that on the permit process.
Are there, like, objective criteria to determine whether something's CARA 1, 2, or 3, or is it something Thurston County came up with, or?
I do not, yeah, I'm not sure the specifics of how the critical aquifer recharge areas are determined, but the county has a map, so it's not like a wetland where delineation is done when someone comes in for a permit. There's already existing data out there that the county uses, and I think some of that data comes from DNR, it might be based on soil types and the underlying geology, but the data exists, it's not something where we go out and we do a site survey for it.
You said that the majority of the counties are over one of the three levels. What percentage of the county would be CARA 1, this most sensitive?
I would not know the percentage off the top of my head.
Is it, I mean, I guess, are there CARA 1s in places other than Nisqually Valley?
Yes.
I'll pass the question baton to the next Commissioner.
Who are you, Gary?
I guess I'd just point out that there is another asphalt blending station doing exactly what Lakeside's wanting to do at Reservation Road in 510, which is inside that sensitive area. Just for information.
That's correct, and that specific operation existed before the Nisqually Subarea Plan, so they were considered a pre-existing legal non-conforming use once that subarea plan was adopted.
I am ready to move forward on this application. I think like Maya said, this is the fifth application that they put in. This has been pending since 2005, where it says Lakeside Industries submitted an application in 2016, that's true, but they also submitted in 2005, and a few times in between there. So it just, that it wasn't acted on. So I think I'm looking forward to be able to say that I voted with Norm Dix on this particular issue. He's a legend in politics, and he thinks it's a good idea, and so do I.
Thank you. Number one, I would just refer back to Slide 5, and thank you for including that, Maya. No decisions regarding an individual site permit application will be made under this policy review, because many, quite obviously, many of the concerns that folks have are permit-specific. But this amendment does not equal a permit. And I love the litany that you went off and read off about, and I'm not going to be quoting you properly. It's encouraged at local, state, and national levels. It's conservationist-friendly, ecologically-friendly, industry-lobbly-friendly, competitive. But what really, really turned me, and I was there already, but I guess what solidified this for me was talking with David Trout from the Nisqually Tribe, that my chat with him on, I think it was Wednesday, what's today? Wednesday? On Monday, on Monday. Short weeks and long weeks, they, and long days throw me off. I talked with him on Monday, and I found our chat on the phone very moving, profoundly important and very moving, as to where the tribe is with this. And so I am ready to give direction to staff as well.
Could I add a comment, Commissioner?
Certainly.
It related to the SEPA process, and the SEPA determination that has been given to this proposed legislation action for you, that doesn't cover individual permits. Individual permits will have to go through their own individual SEPA environmental review. So I just want to clarify that for the view in public, that in fact, if this is not issuing a specific permit, if the Board decides to change the policy, any permit that might be common later on, they have to go through their own SEPA environmental review.
Thank you for that clarification as well. And just one time, Maya, the litany of the things that I kind of summarized that you have given, can I get that in writing? Because I may refer to some of that next week.
Or.
Or encouraged at the legal, you know, the recycling encouraged at the different levels of government.
Yep.
That would be helpful for me. Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, Ty. Go ahead, Ty.
Well, I was just going to pipe up. I think I'm in the minority, but I know that I wanted to just put my position on the record so folks understand. There's two big questions in this for me. This has been a very difficult issue, frankly, in my opinion, because there's a lot of history. It's not just, it's not just one issue about the water quality, it's a lot of issues. And so, but the one big question is, can recycled asphalt be done safely with respect to water? And I think that I'm close to persuaded that it could be, and that's really, that's really a product, more than anything, of the commitment that Lakeside made to the Nisqually Indian Tribe in the letter that was produced yesterday, committing to, not just the language that's in the recycled, the policy amendment, but the commitment to later, committing to a water quality monitoring and adaptive management program above and beyond that. So I was glad to see that. I applaud them for working with the tribe on that. And so, that's really okay, I think. I think that gets me where I need to go. So, in that sense, I preliminarily support Option 3. But when it comes to timing, I do think the second question is the subarea plan. We have a special subarea plan for this area, and, you know, that involves agricultural zoning, conservation rights that have been acquired. Even the folks like David Trout and the Nisqually River Council, even the League of Women Voters, even Mr. Glassdatter, who has been opposed to recycled asphalt in the past but has come around, all of them said, "We'd really like to, we'd really rather see this reviewed holistically with the Nisqually Subarea Plan." So that's where I'm at. I think the whole point of having a subarea plan is to take a holistic look at all the land use issues that are involved. You know, we're losing agricultural land, so one argument that's being made is not that it's water quality problems, that we need, here's a chance for us to reclaim agricultural land. We're losing it all over the county. I don't know if that's right or wrong, but that's something that I think needs to be looked at together. So my position would be that we preliminarily support Option 3, but we expedite, we move the subarea plan up on the docketing priority list and review them together. So that's where I'm at on this. Thank you for everybody's working input. Been a really difficult issue.
And that was, thank you, Commissioner, because that was well put, what you're separating out your concerns and such, and citing Mr. Glassdatter as well. And so with that, let's get, Romero, do you want to get this down to a framing?
Yeah, what I'm hearing is, in terms of Option A, B, and C, and Option 1, 2, and 3 is a little bit too different ones. Option A, B, and C, as presented by staff, is related to the timing. And I would like to probably hear the commissioners, whether you would like to bring this item for the December 15, 2020 for a formal action.
Yes.
Option A.
Option C.
And Commissioner Messers, Option C, which is folded into the subarea plan. So I have a 2 to 1 on Option A to bring this matter before a formal action on December 15. Thank you. The next decision that I would like to hear is on the options. Options 1, 2, and 3 presented to you. Options 1 is no change. Option 2 is proposal with the applicant, and Option 3 is the Planning Commission, which includes requirements for best management practices.
I like Option 3.
3. Like I say, I tentatively support 3. I think I'm going to just abstain, you know, from formally weighing in, but...
Okay. And what'd you say, Gary?
I'm 3.
Okay. Two with one abstention?
Come again?
I'm just clarifying, it's two for 3 and one abstention, one abstain.
Yes, that's what, that's what it captured the vote, yeah.
Thank you. This is a tough one. Yeah, it's an important one. So we get this back again next week? We'll get it on the 15th?
Next week, next week, we'll review the agenda item for the 15th, and if staff is ready to submit an AIS. But, so you will see this item for your formal action on December 15th of this year.
I'll turn to my seatmates. Any final comments?
Is that our next meeting, December 15th?
Your formal meeting, yes, next week.
We're not having a meeting on the 8th, right?
No, it's a budget public hearings.
Which is more fun. Any final comments for my seatmates or questions before we adjourn? Nope, okay. Well then, Maya, shooting star, Josh, rock star, Jennifer, rock star, and thank you, Robin and Romero. And this meeting is now adjourned, unless you have something final to say, Josh or Jennifer or Maya? No? Robin? Okay. Thank you all. Enjoy your afternoon and evening, and we'll see you next time then. This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.